I'm ready. You're ready? Welcome to the first meeting of the summer break. We will now hear the public testimony on non-agenda items. And as a reminder, as per the Brown Act, public testimony on non-agenda items is not a conversation or dialogue with the Board. If an issue needs further attention, the Board may refer the matter to the Superintendent for review and/or investigation. And that's why when we're here and public speakers are making comments, we are not commenting because, not out of choice, because out of law, out of the Brown Act. We are not allowed to have a conversation. And at some point, that becomes an agenda item. Then we have that conversation. And so the public can be ready and engaged. And it's the way it is. So testimony on non-agenda items is limited to a maximum of 15 minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. And depending upon the total number of speaker requests received, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for speakers on non-agenda items will be determined based on the total number of speakers signed up to speak on each topic. So tonight, we have 10, 16 speakers, so roughly two minutes each. Non-agenda public testimony is for only those topics not on today's agenda. If your topic is on the agenda, you'll be called to speak when we get to that subject matter item. So please remember, there's no deferral time is allowed. The Board asks the speakers to focus their comments on the issues and not on individuals. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. Going to call the names of those who signed up in advance first, and then any speaker slips submitted this afternoon will come second, will later. If I call your name, please come down to the podium and be ready to speak in the order that you are called. So speakers on the blue forum who submitted timely requests, the first 10: Emily Castillo, Francine Maxwell, Anthony Manzo, Michelle Mazette, Deborah Robin Meck, Gabriella Contreras, Mizra Lugu, and sorry about that, help me pronounce your name better when you come up, Martha Rosales, Shamso Ahmed, Miriam Ali, and Dan Namanaga. Then they'll be followed by Chris Larson, Medina Majo, Mano, Valentina Hernandez, Jesse Perez, Hilda Rodriguez Babic, Citizen, and then Robin McNulty. So we'll start with our first, our first speakers, Amelia, Francine, and Anthony. Is Amelia here?
Okay.
Francine Maxwell, in our 2020 vision, we have focused on accountability to the students,
parents, and communities you serve. I'm a little bit concerned with the media blitz with the graduation rate due to the fact the state hasn't given us that. As I looked in my community, I had a ninth grade cohort group of 589 ninth graders. In this particular graduation for the class of 26, that was the cohort group that should have been there, there was only 225 graduates. I'm a little bit concerned as to where did my students go? I know that some of them went to charter, some of them went to private school, some of them left the state of California. I'm wondering what formula you used to give the impression that we have a 92% graduation rate. When I talked to my neighbor that works at the County Board of Education, she started to give me figures from a few years ago, which was 89, 88, and she said that they projected that we would be at a 72% graduation rate due to the fact this was our first year of having the A to G requirement. So I'm a little bit concerned, and I know that you can use whatever formula you like, you can use whatever data you like, but as we're building our relationship for our 2016, 2017 year of trust, transparency, and accountability, I would hope that after the summer graduations, that we get a big and true picture of what the graduation truly is. Because like I said, I know for a fact, one of my community schools, over 215 students came back to San Diego Unified from the charters that they were at because they weren't successful. And of course, their neighborhood schools, we take everybody and anybody, no matter what, what problems you have, we try to fix them. So I'm just a little bit concerned as to where my 589 started in the ninth grade and only 225 graduated for this particular class. So I hope that we can address it over the summer so that we can hit the ground running in August. Thank you.
Thank you, Francine. Anthony? Followed by Michelle and Deborah.
Members of the Board, thank you for hearing my comments here. I'm speaking to you on behalf of a number of parents who are concerned about the used car tires being ground up and used as infill for our children's turf in an effort to reduce water usage. The intention to use water, reduce water usage is applauded, the implementation is lauded. This is really not something that was thought all the way through, and I would like to say that there is a study specifically on used car tires, pardon me, crumb tire rubber being used as infill, being conducted by the EPA, due to be released at the end of 2016. Yet, the district intends to continue to pursue aggressively installing these fields before we know what the full safety impact is. If I was a manager of a corporation and I had decided to just let the dice fall where they may, and I let this kind of risk just fly in the face of a date that's coming out in the near future that I could assess, the actual values of the safety that's been measured by a neutral organization like the EPA, this is an opportunity for you guys to wait. It doesn't cost you anything. You can make a much better sound decision afterwards. We will be pursuing litigation immediately following the results of the EPA study if anything is found to be unsafe. I urge the district, please place this on your agenda. Parents want to provide input. We appreciate the public school system. We want to be part of it. We don't want to stand in your way. We just feel like there's a better way that we can solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle? Deborah? Michelle Mazette going twice. And Deborah? I think you're on.
Hi, I'm Deborah Robin Meck. I'm a teacher in San Diego City Schools, and I'm really grateful to be here. And the more time I get to spend watching how it works, watching how we work, the more admiration I have for the job that you guys do and all that it encompasses. I signed up tonight to speak about restorative practices and restorative justice, just to show support, offer any service that I might have to contribute, and just to let us all know that we're right on the cutting edge of all the wonderful shifting that's happening in the schools and in our communities. This morning, I got to hear Daryl Scott speak, father of Rachel Scott, one of the first students killed in the Columbine shootings. And it was in such alignment with what we're doing. You know, he talked about chain reactions of kindness and compassion, and how it ties right in with metacognition and self-actualization, and directly ties to increased academic results. So we're right on the path of having the whole package with everything that we're doing. And I just wanted to thank you guys so much for all the hard work you do.
Thank you. With Gabriella, then Martha, Shamso, and Miriam. Going once for any of those? Can I hear? Not here. Gabriella's not here, Martha? Gabriella, okay. Thank you.
I'm short. Maybe this is better. Yes, good evening, and I'm here basically supporting the new arrival centers, communities. And I'm here to remind you that our English language learners and students with interrupted formal education historically enroll in San Diego Unified Schools outside of the traditional enrollment date. Of the estimated 2,200 school-age refugees who were settled to San Diego in the past two years, about 80% arrived outside the window in which they could register in time for the start of the current academic year. We're calling for a better alignment between the schools and basically to, my notes. We're calling, ah, sorry, Siri. Okay, we're calling for a better alignment between the schools' master schedules that takes into account the needs of continuous enrollment of these students by providing ELD I, II both first and second semester. That's according to the information that we have, but basically keeping in mind these particular demographics of this subgroup, the students with interrupted formal education. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Rosales? Thank you, Martha.
Hi, Bar, my name is, I'm here to support the Crawford community too, about the new arrival center. And we should be respectful and support parents to support the student. Not every parent can read and write. All the students need to have a different level. Four years to learn English is not enough in high school. We know that. And we need to support those kids who bore in the United States, and those kids to new arrive from different countries. And we can work together for better education. Like a parent, it's too hard when we come from different countries to get enrolled, you know, everything. We need more support from you, especially in Crawford community. That's why we're here to support, like a mother. Thank you.
Thank you. Shamso, Ahmed, and Miriam Ali? And Dan?
Hi, my name is Shamso Ahmed. I'm here to support for Crawford. And we are parenting, as we are parenting, we need respect and listening for the, and helping for the new arrive people. And also, we have new arrive kids, and they, they didn't go to school when they was in, in Africa. So they came here when they was 15, 14. So that kid is need a lot of help. And also, we need to, to, to work together with the school as we are parent and community and to lead to help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miriam Ali?
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Miriam Ali. I am here not supporting because my children are enrolled into a three school, man, and Ibarra and Crawford. They come to, they came to listen to, but didn't take a view and viewpoint to listen to us. The board people, they always come to us and say, we listen to you as a parent and student. We want to help you. What do you want us? But nobody ever take actions. So we need a real, meaningful community, parent engagement around our kids. And we need meaningful communication between schools and parenting interpretation, translation for parent. We need to have a president to help translate for parent and cluster schools. We need, okay, why is the school calling? Why the school is calling when the child is absent? We know attendance. You just want our children, for you guys to receive the attendance because that's the way the district get the money, the grant that come from the federal. We want somebody who care our children. We want them to succeed and have a better education like everybody else. This is a discrimination around our children. We feel our children be discriminated. The reason why? Because children who born here and the one who came not two months ago, they sitting together. Our children, they being holed, like this child who's learning A for apple, and the teacher is holding the apples. Our kids, they are not being challenged. We want our children to be challenged, to have the advanced classes, the kids who knows how to read, write, and speaks. And the one who doesn't know how to read, 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 and speaks, we want you guys to help us, to support us. Let's work together. We're not going to stop until we get what we need. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Dan Namanaga? Here, going to the submitted. You've been asleep, yeah? Come on down.
You always get it wrong. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to acknowledge, my name is Dan Nyamanga, from the Crawford community. And I would like to thank the efforts that have been shown by our district towards making sure that they, they reach out to the community and the parents to listen. And sometimes it's not easy to get all the inputs and put them together to make sense. But the efforts that have been shown actually shows leadership as a learning institution that way we are heading. I'd like us to continue with that spirit and move forward with that. And then at the same time, I'd like us also to start thinking about how we're going to welcome new families and students that are coming to our district, given whatever is happening around the world. And San Diego is receiving a lot of refugees and immigrant families and students into our community, and they're coming to our schools. So maybe let's start thinking about how we're going to have a framework towards receiving them and creating a welcoming environment for them to be able to learn and also be part and parcel of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next three speakers, Chris Larson, Medina Majo, and Valentina Hernandez. Or, yeah. So is Chris here? Thank you, Chris.
My name is Chris Larson. I'm a very recently retired new arrival teacher, as of last week. And I'm here to speak in support of the continuation of the new arrival program, or something that similarly supports newcomers. I'm concerned that in the understandable march towards increased graduation rates, that perhaps we're losing, losing the understanding of what students in high schools need in order to succeed academically. Research consistently shows that while students can learn conversational English in less than two years, it typically takes five or seven years to achieve at a similar cognitive and academic level with their native speaking peers. In fact, there's some more recent research that suggests it takes even longer. So far, the district has not presented the research on which they are basing a decision to eliminate the new arrival centers and to expedite putting students into mainstream classes without the support that they need. I think the support that they're suggesting is watered down, and I don't think there's any assurance that the expertise that has been, that has been developed by the new arrival teachers over the last eight years will be replicated. In fact, I think that the district is finding it difficult to get teachers to apply for these jobs, the single-subject English credential. So I think there's some real big problems there. I don't, civil rights, the district has suggested this is a civil rights issue, and of course, we want students to have access to A to G courses, but we must remember what these students need in order to succeed and in order to increase your graduation rates. Thank you.
Medina Majo, please.
Hi, my name is Medina Majo. First coming to the United States and sitting in a classroom when I was 12 and a half in sixth grade, not knowing anything, not even knowing how to write my name. Learning English, it was not easy, still not. Throughout my middle school and high school years, which was men in Crawford, even now I'm going to community college, I still struggle with my writing. But still, that does not stop me from going to school. I'm learning to overcome my struggles. So please keep the new arrival center for the way it is, so kids like me who did not get to have it, to have it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Valentina Hernandez?
Hello, Board members. Thank you very much for having us here, and thank you, everybody in the audience, for coming. I'm here for several issues. And one very important one is the new arrival center. I was not planning on being here, but I also support the new arrival center. It is, the new way that they want to do it might not work. And we cannot risk that our students will fall through the cracks because they're going to be put into the regular classroom. Even though there might be two teachers in the classroom, there's going to be more students, probably 40 or 36 to 42 students in the classroom. And what I have observed when that happens is that the kids fall through the cracks. They are not getting the individual attention that they need to be successful. The new arrival teachers have been trained how to work with new immigrants, and new English teachers have very little training on how to work with new immigrants. So that is a big mistake that the district is making, just letting you know. Also, I want to let you know that Title I money for parent involvement and engagement should be increased. We cannot allow the 1%. That is not enough. And research clearly shows, in most studies, that parent involvement makes a difference. So we need that to go increased to 25% so that all parents could be trained and educated so that they could give their children what they need to be successful and to graduate. So please be with us and help us bring that money to the schools so that the parents could go to workshops and they could bring it back to their schools. I went to a workshop in San Francisco presented on parent involvement and engagement. I still haven't been paid one penny. Hoover High School can't figure out how to get that page to me, and that happened in March. That is a problem. Also, parent centers. The parent center at Monroe Clark and Hoover High School are losing their staff that has been working excellently for years. They know how to work with parents. Parents have felt welcome. Now, it's gone as of June 30th. That is another problem. We need parent liaisons in every single school so that they could work and train parents so that they could empower them from all grade levels.
Thank you.
And there's more.
No, thank you.
To be continued. I'll give you a copy of the letter, and you guys can make more.
Yeah, please. Yeah, that would help. For our last four speakers, Jesse Perez, Hilda Rodriguez, Babic, Citizen, and then Robin McNulty. So Jesse?
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Jesse Perez, and I come to you as a representative of many, many parents of the Joiner School community. We are here for one thing and one thing only. We do not want our principal, Mr. Tim Swanico, removed from our school. The reason we came here is because we have learned from a parent who attended a meeting with a board member, Richard Barrera, that he made a promise to disgruntled teachers that our principal will be removed from our school before next year. We ask, how can that be? Mr. Barrera has not heard from the greater school community, especially the many parents that support the hard work we have witnessed from our principal. If the voices of our school community are not fairly heard, we are not given a fair opportunity to keep our principal. We will be taking our calls to the media because we are currently seeing and experiencing is that our school board is prioritizing the bullying behaviors of the teachers' union over the needs of our children and their parents. School board members, we have solid data and evidence to back up our position. What truthful and solid evidence or data do you have to show us that Mr. Swanico should be removed from our school? City Heights is already an underserved, underprivileged community. The parents of Joiner will no longer settle for eight years of low test scores and eight years of programs that have not shown any academic improvements for our children. Who is it that you really work for? Thank you.
Hey, Jesse? Hilda Rodriguez?
Good afternoon, Superintendent Martin and trustees. I've come here for help. That's usually the only time I come. I'm a teacher at Euclid Elementary. We moved into a fabulous new building in January of 2014. It was fabulous for about three days. We, along with the new building, we got a very expensive air conditioning system that has failed to work regularly since then. The only time it ever does work, when the temperature reaches 75 degrees or higher, is when I send out emails to all my administrators, all my custodians to ask for help. That usually elicits numerous technicians coming and trying to figure out what's going on. I've been told it's anything from it's the wrong unit, it's the control system that the district installs on it to control when it turns on and when it turns off, that it's not compatible, it's not interfacing properly. I've been told that somehow it, it is engaging with the plumbing, that somehow the plumbing has something to do with it. Over the last two and a half years, our custodians have had to, every single day, go up on the roof and reset it and turn it on manually. To me, that's a waste of time. And that is the symptom, but I think it's a symptom of a more endemic problem. It's lack of quality management. I think a building is something quite concrete, literally, that can be built, it has specs, it has a plan, it should be followed through. But something's going on, two and a half years. I shouldn't be the person who's alerting anybody that some kind of facility mechanism isn't working. I have lots to do with my students. And this often coincides, we're year-round school, we still have 22 days to go in midsummer. This coincided with testing this year, and we had to postpone several days of testing. And if you have ever sat through testing when children are sweating and because there's no ventilation, this building is very high efficiency, therefore, there's no ventilation whatsoever. So I'm asking for your help at this point. Thank you very much.
We heard that. Thank you. Citizen, followed by Robin?
So the Board approved Muddlin Martin's, Muddlin Martin's new reorganization chart, which they've done again and again and again. And that's how she spends her time, really, going into the fourth year as a superintendent, and she still can't get the organization of her, her education system right. And the best that she can do is to hire Andrew Sharp. That would be Andrew Sharp of Reporter's Bodies Washing Up on the Beach Sharp. That was a really bad decision. It needs to be looked at again. And again, I'm filing complaints about students having to pay for fees. I just filed a complaint on recorders. So the students that could afford to pay the $7 for recorders, Cindy got a copy of this complaint. They had a recorder to practice with. Those that were loaned a recorder by the school were told, Those that were loaned a recorder by the school were told, "You cannot take it home to practice with." Only those that bought their own recorder can take their recorder home. That is no way for any educator, for any teacher, to treat a child, to tell them, "Well, those that have money get to practice at home with their recorders, and those that have no money and have to have one from the school don't get to practice at home." That's a two-tier education, and this is going on under Cindy Martin. With all the money that's coming in and all the lottery money, there's no excuse for every child not being provided the supplies that they have. That's another problem that I'm seeing. The wink-wink, it's a donation. Kids are still having to buy pencils, kids are still having to buy notebooks, kids are still having to buy paper. That's basic educational supplies. When you're telling a kindergartner that he has to buy his own crayons and the teacher tells him exactly what brand to buy, you're not doing something right in a school district if you can't provide the basic supplies for those children.
Thank you. Robin McNulty.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Martin, I'm here on behalf of the San Diego Hunger Coalition to say it's summertime, but that is not always mealtime for many students that we have in San Diego County. We have about 72% of our students in the county who, during the school year, qualify for free and reduced meals, but during the summer, they are without. So I wanted to just feature your amazing food service department, who for the 13th year in a row will be offering the Summer Fun Cafe kickoff barbecue happening tomorrow, and they have over 61 sites for children in the San Diego Unified School District to come and get meals at no cost, at no reservation, and any child who is under the age of 18 will be there. I believe that tomorrow at the kickoff event, your superintendent will be attending, along with the mayor of San Diego, to help feed some of these meals to the children. So I do have some of their flyers that I'd like to hand out and ask for you to distribute, perhaps in your offices or your neighborhoods, so that we can help any of those children and families who are looking for a meal or a snack in the summertime. This program is funded totally through your federal government, and it provides money also to our local economies, because we do purchase foods and other opportunities for employees to have more work in the summer. So thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. If we did not get to you in the first 30 minutes, we will also hear non-agenda public testimony at the end of the meeting. So I think there's a speaker that wanted additional time, there would be an opportunity into the meeting to do that. Thank you all for your comments and for taking time to address the board and the superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve students, parents, and the community. With that, I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast, and call the June 28, 2016 regular meeting to order with all board members present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
Thank you. If you wish to address the board today on any of the items before the board, and your name is not on the speaker list that's printed on the paper located at both entrances of the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request, please complete the form and submit it to Cheryl Ward, our board action officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item, and I believe we have five speakers for item H1, and we have a couple for E as well, for the consent agenda I. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker request will be accepted by the board. Board Bylaw 1025 provides that public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent item and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, depending upon the total number of speaker requests received by the board on that item. The time may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for a speaker on today's agenda items will be announced at each item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM tonight, and it will also be heard at the end of the meeting. We will now hear item B3, the student presentation from Clark Middle School. That's the Whitehurst Bank.
Board President, Superintendent, and fellow board members, I would like to welcome to the Education Center the representatives, a teacher here, and I'm not sure I have not seen the principal, but I do know the teacher is here, Chris Lee, and his students, and we had the pleasure of hearing them on this past Thursday, I believe it was, at the retirement event, and I tell you, you're in for a treat. Thank you, and welcome back again, students.
Bye, president.
Thanks so much for having us, President McQuarrie and the representatives. I just want to say before we go into our next song, I've been working for the district for 17 years. And I've been at Clark for six, and I've been all over the district as part of the sheriff's badge, and of course, I was on Toronto, I had a memorial for a while. And what we have going on at Clark is extremely meaningful to me because, like for example, 10 of our 17 students are all English language learners. And they're so cooperative and they're so smart. And I just, to me, like what we have happening at Clark just really embodied what we're really shooting for in the district. You know, my friends, I go up to San Diego, they all send their kids to private schools or charter schools. And I don't think they're even getting this there. So, anyway, thank you for listening and I hope you enjoy our next two songs.
Thank you.
Good job.
That was middle school.
I know.
I can't wait to hear it in high school. You guys have to come back in a couple of years when you're in high school. I promise.
And then let us into your shows when you're famous.
Yeah.
I want to say thank you to you.
Yes.
Before we sign off, I'm asking home Clark, we're doing a little fundraiser. It's 10 bucks. It'll be created by a really great restaurant called Soler Escondite, about Liberty Station. And if you want to buy the 60 half, we're going to play a set of these guys, a little bit longer if this wasn't one for you. But where? Monroe Clark Public School. 138 North Street. And about 70 people. And I would love to see you and all of you there. So, thanks so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, excellent. Now, the arts and music are live and well in San Diego Unified.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to adopt today's agenda with section I, superintendent's consent agenda to be considered following the adoption of the agenda.
No move.
Is there a second? Then moved in second to adopt the agenda, moving item I to the top. All in favor, say aye. Pass your vote. And votes have been cast.
I'll move item aye, the superintendent's consent agenda.
We have, item I has been moved. We have two items, I-9 and I-33 with speakers, so those who need to be--
I'll amend my motion to move those two items to the end of the agenda.
Okay. The action on section I, superintendent's consent agenda with I-9 and I-33 moved means that all items appearing in section I are adopted for one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests that any item be removed from the consent agenda. Does any other member of the board want to remove an item? Hearing none? Okay. And voted upon separately or withdrawn from today's agenda. Generally, consent agenda items are matters which members of the board and the superintendent concur are routine in nature and should be acted on in one motion. Ms. Ward, are there any other items that we need to consider? I'd like, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Cast your votes. That passes. Item I-9 and I-33 will be heard at the end of the meeting. Ms. Donovan, are there any reportable actions to report out from the closed session?
Yes, the board voted four to zero with Mr. Barrera absent to reassign two certificated administrators to site positions. And the board approved four zero with Mr. Barrera absent, a settlement in the workers' compensation cases identified on the closed session agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Superintendent Martin, are there any administrative assignments to report out?
Yes, President McQuarrie, there are two management appointments. Instructional Support Officer in Leadership and Learning, Tavga Bustani, and Instructional Support Officer at Secondary Schools, Wendy Rank Burr.
Okay. Each board member will now have an opportunity to speak and share information if they wish. And we'll begin to my left, starting with trustee Whitehurst Bane.
Thank you for that opportunity. Mr. President, I would like to report on the graduations that I attended last week. And what a wonderful time it was to actually share with the young people. The first graduation that I attended was Crawford High Schools. And it was at the Symphony Hall, and it turned out to be a wonderful event. Even the folks there were surprised at how wonderfully our young people conducted themselves, and I was proud of them. I believe there were 187 graduates coming from 24 different countries. And it was a wonderful event to see that. The next day, on that Tuesday, I began with Bell Middle School, and I understand they had had some incident the week before, but they were able to rise above that. And the parents there, I wanted to thank them for actually sending their children to our schools and entrusting them to us. So that was a nice event. And then SCPA had two graduations that day. They had the middle school initially, and then they had the high school ceremony, and they decided that this is the last time they're going to do that. Two in one day was a little bit too much for the person who had to make all the arrangements. But that was a beautiful event, that I attended the middle school. And then I moved over to Lincoln High School. And both the superintendent and I wound up at that event. And that was tremendous. That was a very moving graduation. We had to commend the students for persevering and coming out on top. I think they did a wonderful job there this year. They got beyond all of the things that had occurred, and they just took ownership for their progress. And I'm very pleased at the progress that those students made and that the others who remain are making in terms of actually taking ownership for their learning. That is not to say that Lincoln has completed all of its journey, but I believe that we're on the right path. And this whole issue has come up about elitism and whether or not we expect every child to be elite. And my philosophy is that every child should be elite to someone. And we want them to, we say that you are somebody, we want them to be somebody to somebody everywhere. And that we need to encourage students to take on that attitude and that role, that they have a right to be elite. And that we expect them to go for the best and to be the best. And I believe that that's happening, that's beginning to occur at Lincoln, and the larger community understands that that is the expectation. We're not dumbing down anything. We are lifting the standards there. And I want to comment on the fact that we went on Friday to Gompers, and the president was there also. And I'll let him report on that wonderful occasion also. But then on Sunday, I also attended an event at the Embassy International Church. It was an invitation that came into the board. It's a church group that's meeting at Lincoln High School, and they gave out five $1,000 scholarships. And they requested applicants from San Diego Unified School District. And that group apparently is giving $7,500 to Valencia Park for their Little League team or some sports team. They're supporting a school, they're giving out scholarships, they had a group of members there who encouraged their students to achieve, to go on to college, and they're demonstrating it. And that's what I want to see overall, that we promote excellence and achievement and support for one another. So, last week was a very good event from, starting on Monday with the graduations, all the way through Sunday and giving out scholarships. And I want to thank you even for the group that came today from Clark. That's excellence, is it not? And that's what we want and expect from all of our students to achieve. Thank you, and hopefully I covered it all.
Thank you. Trustee Evans?
Thank you. Yes, we all did attend a lot of graduations. I think at Miramesa High School, I shook 560 hands. And at the high school graduation time, I'm remembering that when trustee Barrera and I came on the board, that the class of 2020 is in first grade, they're now in the eighth grade and getting ready to go on to high school. And I'd like to just give them an opportunity to say a little bit about what their experience has been like in middle school. This was actually from when they were in the seventh grade. So, this is from last year. They went from Bernie to Roosevelt Middle School, and many of them will be going on to San Diego High School. So, if we could just flip a switch and see something.
Last school I went to, I met a really good friend, and I still see her around Roosevelt today. I don't think she remembers that we were good friends at that time, but I remember her, and I think that's really nice.
I discovered scissors.
You discovered scissors?
I cut a girl's hair. Her name was Trista.
Okay.
I remember hiding, like, right behind my mom's leg, and my mom talking to this girl I've never met, and like, knowing her like well. And we're both doing the same thing, hiding behind. And we just kind of like shyly walked up to each other. And now I still don't know her, but like, not as good friends anymore. But that's like the one big memory I still have.
It was very interesting because we had six periods, seven periods, but we had like different teachers. It was, yeah, because we didn't have our electives yet, but we had different teachers teaching different things to us. So, we had a teacher for math and science, we had a teacher for humanities, history and English, we had a teacher for PE, and a teacher for a second language.
I was very excited to become a middle schooler. I was slightly nervous, but we're always going to have that slight bit of nervousness where you're going into a new school, you might not know anybody in your classes or anything like that. But I was excited to try out the switching from class to class. Of course, when that bell rang, I was running across campus to make sure I got to my next class in time. But I found that after we went a little further into the year, I felt more comfortable with that.
In Roosevelt, I've liked the fact that we have an elective. We get to choose a class period that we get to learn about something we're interested in, whereas most other places you'll be forced to take art or forced to take all these other classes. But here you can choose, I want this, and I'll learn about this, whereas just being force-fed the information.
I like that, like this, because I'm a peer tutor. So, we help the kids in need. And Ms. Johnson, she does a great job of looking at us and teaching us techniques and really to help the kids.
I like the electives. And also, I like the new experience of having multiple teachers that work with you differently, and you can, it's more of a one-on-one experience when you have like more teachers sometimes. It's cool because like, your teachers get, every teacher teaches you a different way, and sometimes that helps you learn better.
My favorite part about middle school so far has been meeting a lot of new friends and trying out a lot of the unique experiences that Roosevelt has given me, such as the electives and switching from classes, from class to class.
In middle school, I really like the chance to like explore new things, especially at Roosevelt, the second language. I really like that because at Bernie, we only did it once a week. Here we do it every day, which is really fun because most of my family speaks Spanish and only Spanish, so I take Spanish to be able to communicate with them better.
In high school, I'm looking forward to participating in a student leadership section of high school. I am very interested in leading groups of kids and assisting teachers and stuff like that, so.
I'm looking forward to mostly the freedom of what I'll have, I'll be able to like go to different classes that I want to, I'll be able to just be able to do more things openly.
I'm looking forward to chemistry, the sports programs that they have there.
Technology is going to be very different. I mean, we're already seeing stuff like AI that lets us, that lets a car park itself. We're seeing drones that are going to be used for Amazon to deliver items.
I think it would be kind of similar, but with more advanced technology and like--
I think that it's going to be very similar to how the world is today, just people are probably going to be quite a bit different in the way they act towards others. But other than that, I think it's mostly going to be the same.
And what?
I probably would like to either work with programming or engineering, because I really like to make stuff better. I see a design, and I see something wrong with it, or I see something that could be better about it, and I try to fix it, make it better, just improve it.
I would like to be a professional soccer player, but if that doesn't work out, I would like to be a rocket scientist.
My dream job is to be a civil engineer, and hopefully, one of the things I was looking at was working for zoos and botanical gardens, creating spaces for different plants and animals.
Well, I really like music, and I really like helping people with disabilities, so I would want to help people through music. So, like, teach people with learning disabilities music to help them learn better at this.
Well done. Any comments about that?
I want to thank Tavga Bustani for editing it and part of the team.
Well, thank you for bringing student voices to the dais and to the public meeting. That's very important for us to remember why we're here, and it helps us keep focused. Trustee Barrera? Vice President Barrera?
So, I attended three graduation ceremonies, all unique in unique school communities. So, San Diego High School, so this was the first year that we had a single principal, Dr. Carmen Garcia, over the entire school. So, we still have three schools on the San Diego High Campus, but one principal. And San Diego High School always has, you know, tremendous energy and spirit, and its graduation ceremony, another large graduation ceremony. But this was a class that the valedictorians who spoke really emphasized what they see as the contribution that they're, you know, prepared for this class to make to the world. And they started, as we commented, that the legacy of the class of 2016 at San Diego High School is going to be that that is the class that's going to save San Diego High School and make sure it's still there into the future. And they've already shown their ability to be active and to contribute to their community. So, it was terrific ceremony there. Garfield High School, under the direction of Dr. Jolie Pickett, is always one of the most powerful graduation ceremonies, because these are students who hit a point where they didn't believe that they were going to be able to graduate. They didn't believe that they were going to overcome, be able to overcome the challenges that have been thrown their way. But that class took tremendous pride in being able to show the grit and determination and belief in themselves to get to that point and to become high school graduates. And one of the nice things that Garfield does every year is they ask any student who wants to make a speech to the graduating class to just, you know, come forward and do it. It's not based on any sort of, you know, achievement beforehand. So, there were, I think we had four students who spoke. All of them talked about incredible challenges that at a young age they've been able to overcome. And a couple of them, Jolie mentioned, you know, had been very quiet, you know, at the beginning of their time at Garfield. And so, for them to be able to stand up in front of a whole gym full of people and deliver a speech was really, it took a lot of guts and was very inspiring. And then I also attended the Mount Everest graduation ceremony. And as a proud parent, I want to thank this board and superintendent Martin and all of the educators in our entire district, because that was my second son who graduated this year from San Diego Unified School District. So, I'm a parent of the class of 2016. So, three different, very different school communities, but all with an incredibly committed relationship between the students and the educators that they've worked with every day. And we've got a lot to be proud of in this district.
Trustee Beiser?
Thank you, President McQuarrie.
Thank you, President McCrory. I attended quite a few ceremonies. The first one was at Green Elementary School. Green Elementary School has a longstanding tradition at the end of every year to have an annual award ceremony to recognize and honor the students that run the most number of miles each year around the track. And the student with the most number of miles has run over 570 miles in the school day. And they go out and they run a couple times around the track every morning before school. You know, those elementary kids are getting their exercise in, getting some of their energy out. And a lot of the teachers at Green Elementary School says that it really helps them focus and concentrate more in the classroom. And we have a lot of schools that do running programs like this, like Gage Elementary School is another one. Then I visited Patrick Henry High School to check in on the progress of the construction for the Performing Arts Center. Hopefully, we're looking at that facility opening up soon. They're a little bit behind schedule, but hopefully will be on track to open up for the next school year. And the Performing Arts Center will house career technical education classrooms, orchestra opportunities, concert band, drama, choir, and a lot of other things. And it'll also be a performing arts center for all of the elementary and middle schools in the cluster too that need a large facility. Then for graduations and promotions, I attended Marshall Middle School Promotion in Scripps Ranch and then Taft Middle School. And the thing that was so nice about the Taft Middle School Promotion Ceremony for those eighth graders is that they don't have it in the little tiny cramped hot cafeteria anymore. Now, the Taft Middle School has it at the Kearney High School Air Conditioned Auditorium. And so that's a much better venue. And it also provides connection between Taft Middle School and then Kearney High School, where most of those children are going to go. And then for the high schools, I attended Sarah High School Promotion, which had a graduating class over about, over 96%. Then the next day, Patrick Henry High School, which graduating class was about 99%. And Scripps Ranch High School, which was, I think, one stu-, I could be wrong, but I think it was one student short of 100% graduation class at Scripps Ranch High School. So, you know, we've all had a very busy week, but this is the favorite, my favorite part of the year, getting to watch the accomplishments and listen to some of the students talk about their journey and see so much success and, and really, this is wonderful. And I just want to also thank Superintendent Cindy Martin, because I remember six years ago when we embarked upon the class of 2016 A through G with graduation requirement. You know, we knew that it was going to be a big challenge and that there was going to have to be a lot of work done by counselors, teachers, staff, we're going to have to support the students. And I just want to say thank you very much, Cindy. You have worked miracles at helping these kids. Thank you.
Excellent.
I also attended a number of promotions and graduations and did school visits and had some meetings and attended events. The promotion and graduations, I started at Korea Middle School and it was two separate, two separate groups, a very, very large group. Korea is a seven, eight school. I think it's one of our only junior highs in a sense in the district. And so they will go on to Point Loma High School. I also did, attended the La Jolla High School graduation because their field is getting worked on. They hope to be there next year. They met at the UCSD Arena, a great turnout, over 3,000 parents filled the arena with a very energetic class and a demonstration of jazz music and it was very, very well attended. Then went on to Mission Bay High School, which also had a jazz component to their, to their graduation ceremony in their brand-new stadium and a large, a great turnout. Was at several of our charter schools. I've attended Kip's eighth grade promotion and their high school graduation at the Jacob Center and also Poise graduation ceremony on their campus at US, at UCSD. And then the Gompers Preparatory Academy graduation ceremony held at Jacob Center. The Gompers Preparatory Academy was total music. It was a display of music and dance and really a very attractive and thrilling event to see. One of the most unique graduations I attended was the I-High graduation, which was held at the University of San Diego. I-High is our virtual high school, students who are completing their coursework online. And it's a very difficult process to do. We're working with the online course credits, but they had a great turnout with a great event held in a nice location on the university, university campus. The schools I visited, I was at the Point Loma High School and participated in an AB statistic class student project presentation. It's the time they have between they take the AP exams and they graduate. So they did, did some experiments and they reported out their results and it was very, very well done. Was also at Zamorano's Elementary School Celebration of the Arts. I think Trustee Whitehurst Payne was, was there as well. And what an incredible display of community support and activity around the arts at Zamorano. It's a student body of 1,200 students, incredibly, a very, very large school and doing some great work. Meetings went from Sacramento to with the CSBA, the LCAP Collaborative Working Group, where Superintendent Martin and I attended. We're part of a group of 17 school districts throughout the state to take a look at the LCAP, see how we can make it more flexible, more meaningful, more understandable and more workable. And so we're doing some good work there and they'll presenting the recommended changes to the State Board in July, so we hope it moves in our direction, which is to make it more meaningful and more usable. Also attended Rotary meetings in La Jolla, where we're working with the group there to connect our schools with schools in Afghanistan. So we've got, taking a look at how we can expand our world, our world language component and our cultural component, our civic engagement component. I was at an AVID training session at the Grand Hyatt Hotel. It was attended by 5,800 people. AVID is the program that helps our students develop study skills and to, to take on effective, to learn how to take notes, how to study, how to learn, how to do well. And then events, there were three press events that I held, one with Superintendent Martin, which had to do with the restorative practices, which was just yesterday. So we had some nice coverage there. Also was invited to be in the studio with KUSI to talk about our graduation. And I think I want to note here that when we state our 92% graduation, it really is a trend. It's what we think we will get. The, it is, if the data has to be validated and checked by the State Department, we're usually a year behind. So the official numbers are really, are the ones came from last year. I think we had a speaker that called attention to that, which was like an 89.6 or so. Those are the official numbers that are really from valid, the data that was validated a year ago. Numbers we're using is the trend based upon our numbers. This is what we think we're going to get and we're looking forward to it and we're on track to do that. Was also at Salk Elementary School with Trustee Beiser and Trustee Whitehurst Payne to see how we're moving technology into the classroom and then from the classroom home so that every student can take, take home not only a recorder, but a, but a smart educational device. And that would take care of it. All in all, a very, very, very busy schedule from the last meeting to this one. We will now hear item.
How about Cindy Martin? What's the question?
Oh, you skipped superintendent report, but I said that's, I would have said it's okay, I don't have a report tonight because I knew Dr. Evans had a long report.
Whoa.
You just skipped that one.
I did. All right. Moving on. So I actually did do T2. Will now hear items E1, the second reading and adoption of the partnership agreement with San Diego Community College District in alignment with AB 288 for college courses offered on high school campuses and conduct the public hearing. I'd like a motion on item E1.
So moved.
Well, now, so we got a motion and a second. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you, President McCrory. It's a public hearing, it's a second read, and it's to bring our agreement with the Community College into alignment, as you said, with AB 288. The Community College Board actually has already approved their side of this agreement, so this is our side to continue that partnership and the district-wide agreements.
Anything else to report?
We have, so we will open the, the, for public hearing and we have one speaker, citizen. I saw her leave. She come back. Okay, going once. Sally Smith, twice. Going three times. So public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote.
Oh.
Oops, we already voted. We missed you. But why, do you want to make your comment?
Yeah.
Please, thanks.
Which, this is E8?
E1. E1. Well, it's really important to continue with the transcript checks because this community college partnership is only going to work if counselors do their jobs well. The program's only as good as the counselors. My experience was that counselors block students from opportunities like this. It was a constant battle with counselors telling parents they know better for the student than the parents know. So continue with the transcript checks and see if those counselors are actually placing these children in the classes they're requesting specifically college courses. When my kids graduated, they had one year of community college ready to go. So when they enrolled at Mesa College, they were starting, they got all the classes they needed because they were starting as sophomores. It's a very valuable educational experience for these kids to take these college classes. So again, make sure those counselors are doing their jobs and telling the truth and being open and transparent. A good way to do that is to post the master schedules and just put it on the, on the website so that parents know that these things are available instead of having all the counselors control information. Because when they control information, they're not always doing it for the benefit of the kids.
Thank you. Now we'll hear item E2, the 2016-17 Annual Service and Budget Plan for Special Education. Do we have a motion?
I'll move item E2.
We have a second?
One second.
Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you, Dr. McCrory. This is also a public hearing for the 2016-17 Annual Service and Budget Plan for the Local Plan for Special Education. We're conducting this as a public hearing. California Ed Code Section 56205 requires that we submit the annual budget and service plans that are adopted in a public hearing to be in alignment with the SALPA, the Special Education Local Plan area. These plans must identify the expected expenditures in special education and include the description of services, physical location of services, and demonstrate that all individuals with exceptional needs have access to the services and instruction that they need. And this is that annual plan and a public hearing for that.
Okay, we'll open item E2 for public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
Public hearing is closed. We have a motion, any questions, comments?
The item, I already, oh, you heard it.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. No comments, no, cast your vote. Have unanimous vote? We'll now hear item E3, the 2016-17 Single Plan for Student Achievement and Categorical Budget Sumories for 176 schools.
I'll move item E3.
We have a motion and a second. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you. This is to approve the proposed 1617 SPSAs or Single Plan for Student Achievement and the Categorical Budget Sumories for the schools, which are attached. And the only comment I would make about this is that we are in continuous conversation with the state, giving our feedback about possibly sunsetting these plans because we have the local control accountability plan and this is a duplicative effort, but it's not sunsetted yet. And so in the meantime, we don't want to end something like this that has a strong school process and a way to record goals. But the LCAP is really the driver of the decisions and we want, the state has recognized the fact that they want to bring into alignment any state compliant issues so that there are schools and local areas are not doing any duplicative efforts. But we also want to make sure that there's transparency and accountability. So in the meantime, these are still required by the state and these are being submitted tonight.
Do we have any speakers on this end? Any comments, questions? Cast your vote. Is unanimous?
I'll move the board consent agenda.
Second. We got a motion and a second. That's F1 and 2. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Vote, cast your vote. That is unanimous. Moving on to operational matters for the board, we'll now hear item G1, the District English Learning Advisory Committee, DILAC, the semi-annual update to the board. Please welcome Florentina Martinez Moreno, DILAC Chair, thank you, and Yasmin Bozen and Lalia Alali.
Good evening, board. I'm Yasmin Bozen. Okay, thank you. And Florentina couldn't come, she's sick. And thank you for the opportunity to present our work to you. We will highlighting reclassification, DILAC involvement with the schools and ELSTs, bilinguism celebration and recommendations. Okay, this slide is a comparison of number of students being reclassified. This year, we are pleased to announce that 3,603 students reclassified to date. This number will increase because paperwork is still being submitted by the year-round schools and is also lower because it's been, in the past, it's lower because it's been in the, it is not required by the, by the CSTs any longer, so that's why it's going to be lower anyways. The Office of Language Acquisition expanded efforts to give students an opportunity, opportunity to distinguish themselves, themselves as bilingual and satisfy the language requirements for A through G and graduation. And the DILAC liaison is part of the collaborative support system for English learners. It's demonstrated as our DILAC liaison attend reclassification ceremonies. We are proud to our children, many of them are bilingual. This picture displays the support of our schools' communities. Displays are ELST, DILAC liaison, board member and principal.
My name is Lalia Alali. I am the newly elected chairperson of DILAC. Thank you for this opportunity as well. So on June 6, 2016, the Office of Language Acquisition invited the DILAC Executive Board members to the ELST PD. This was the first time that the Office of Language Acquisition invited DILAC Executive Board members to a professional development training. Yasmin and I, Lalia Alali, attended. The ELSTs are supporting schools through relationship. They focus on collaborating and supporting the adult at the school. They work with the school site leadership and teachers. The area superintendents help guide the growth and develop, development for the members of the green team. During this PD, I have seen a highly dedicated team of ELSTs willing to embrace the change and lead the new model to support the English learners. One of the several things they are doing, they decided to get together and study books on coaching, such as The Art of Coaching. However, as a future leadership coach, I need only two classes to earn a nationally-recognized credential. Coaching is an art that cannot be found in one specific book. It's an art that requires learning skills and strategies as well as practice that are vital to success. Coaching in this context has to be ongoing and regular, personalized, because not, not all the teachers accept the change. Some of them are resistant, enabling others rather than imposed, adapted and adaptable on the changing needs, planned, model-based. on the changing needs, planned, model-based, focused on aims, measured and recorded and time-based. And to achieve that, our ELSTs need more support, more training, and workshops and
Thank you. Congratulations on your new position.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Lopez. I'm a rising senior at SEPA. I am the student representative of DILAC. I am attending, I attended the San Diego County Office of Education Bilinguality Symposium. Two of our ELSTs were recognized and celebrated for their dedication to the strengthening and support of our district's bilingual and dual language schools.
So, these are our recommendation to the Board of Education and the superintendant. First, we encourage schools to identify a team that can monitor English learners. ELSTs are employed in tasks that advance and support services intended to ensure the educational achievement of English learners and students, so they develop a full proficiency in English and are able to meet grade level standards in a timely manner. With the new model, ELSTs support multiple school site clusters. They provide supplemental support to principals and site leadership teams but do not work directly with the students. Each school site is now expected to identify someone to serve as an English learner coordinator. In most cases, this person is not a credential teacher. This person has a separate full-time job, and English learner coordinator responsibilities are added to that job. English learner coordinators are mainly in charge of testing English learners and do not work with the student directly to provide supplemental instruction or support, as the ELSTs used to do. This situation creates the need for another site layer of supplemental support to ensure the academic progress of our English learners. And for that, we are asking the Board of Education and the superintendant to identify a site-level English learner monitoring team that can monitor the English learner's learning process and instruction, and to make sure our English learner student at each particular school receive appropriate services. Two, we recommend that each school designates an English learner counselor to be responsible for tracking the purposeful placement of English learners and monitoring their progress. All students in the San Diego Unified School District receive comprehensive school counseling services as a required part of the student's complete instructional program in order to prepare them for successful grade level transition with necessary character, college, and career readiness skills. English learners in our district need designated counselors with additional specialized training and workshop to ensure that the English learners receive guidance curriculum in the area of academic, career, personal, social development, and provide intervention services for students experiencing academic and personal or social barriers to learning, as well as provide guidance and information to English learners and families to ensure success in student attendance, behavior, and graduation. As an example, students who are fluent in Spanish often take Spanish one in high school. Why? Because it's an easy class. The English learner counselor would be expected to recognize that this choice is not in the best interest of the student and counsel the student against it. The third, our third recommendation, we are very interested in understanding how the ELST coaching model will help improve the outcome of the English learners. I graduated in May with a master in leadership from USD. I was privileged that last year, USD added leadership coaching courses to the leadership program as an opportunity to complete the requirement necessarily to earn a nationally recognized credential in an emerging field in addition to a master in leadership. The coaching process enables individuals to achieve their full potential. It's a technique that permits learning and development to happen and the performance to improve. To be a successful coach required a knowledge of, knowledge and understanding of a process as well as the variety of styles, skills, and techniques that are appropriate to the context in which the coaching takes place. For me, to grasp the concept of coaching, four areas were provided to me at USD. First, the learning. Two, the practice. Three, a supervisor to guide my experience with my client, as well as a coaching circle with professors. However, the ELSTs were given these new coaching tasks without previous knowledge and guidance. For that, we are asking our Board of Education and the superintendant to provide more support for our ELSTs, such as professional development on the art of coaching, using our local resources. Four, school accountability for providing dedicated ELD and integrated ELD instruction for English learners at the appropriate cell level. The California Department of Education, CDE 2010, has defined ELD as instruction that is designed to help English learners learn and acquire English to a level of proficiency that maximizes their capacity to engage successfully in academic studies taught in English. For that, we recommend the Board of Education and the superintendant to redouble their efforts to make sure that these services are actually taking place and monitor the situation to ensure that all schools are providing daily ELD while holding all the English learner students to the same high expectation outlined in the Common Core State. These are services our students are entitled to receive under the law. The last recommendation that is not included in the slides is bullying. We are glad that the school district took serious effort to provide a safe learning environment to the LGBTQ group. However, bullying is affecting various groups in our district because of their religion, race, ethnicity, or maybe disability, and more. For that, we are asking the Board of Education and the superintendant to extend this effort to include all races, ethnicities, and religions. Few months ago, I was standing before you, sharing an alarming statistic regarding bullying of Muslim kids in our district. I hope that you take this request seriously and help the Muslim children feel safe as well in our district. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
The DILAC Executive Board thanks the San Diego Board of Education for the opportunity to join our district in this work of supporting our English learners. We thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you. So, we have two speakers, Gabriela Contreras and Valentina Hernandez.
Before we go, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Through the years, you know me, that I've been in DILAC for many years.
Right.
I'm not good on reading, but I'm very good on hard. And through the years, I've been having a lot of trainings through the Ola department and through the community. So, I always try to do my best, and I haven't feel bullied by the staff, and I will not upset bullied by parents also as well. So, here I am. Thank you for your support, and I hope you guys see me again soon.
Thank you. Before we have the superintendent respond to the issues and concerns and the report, we have two public speakers, Gabriela Contreras and Valentina Hernandez.
Yes. Good evening. I have, according to the plan that was presented to us to serve the ELLs, two issues stand out. In regards of assessing the development of valid and reliable content area assessments for ELLs, this is very critical to follow up on. It is overall, it is considered underdeveloped according to many subject matter experts. So, we would like to follow up on that. Also, from the programmatic aspect of the plan, the training and capacity building are other issues to keep an eye on because it was concerning when we learned that the training would be optional for teachers. So, that is something that we are also keeping an eye on. Also, we remember a couple of comments that students, high school students, made when they learned about this plan, this new plan to serve the newcomers in regards of the NACs. They were saying, they were stating that they foresee dropouts, or they would even, they were even concerned about the fact that they were pushed, they felt they were being pushed out to adult education. So, I just thought that those two comments were really valid to, basically, for you to know. Last, I would say that more than following the reclassification numbers, the data of these students should be follow-up also in the, in the two years after. That's very critical because I'm concerned that we would be just following up on the number of students that are reclassified and forget about the part of how prepared they are for college. And last but not least, overall, I would say that combining subgroups, these ELLs have different subgroups, such as the long-term English learners and the newcomers, could or may obscure performance needs that are specific to each subgroup. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker.
Ola, Valentina Hernandez, again. I want to let you know that at the last DILAC meeting, we were informed that about 16 schools that used to have ELX now have delegated to the SSC their functions, which is a very bad thing. And this has happened in the last three years or so, since we have not been in office, Gabriela and myself. It has went downhill instead of going uphill. We were supposed to increase the number of schools that have ELX so that they could better represent their students and their schools, and it backfired and went, and we have less. We should have more. Also, I want to let you know that we need to continue having the English language support teachers at every school. It is very necessary that the students get the extra support so that they could move over the edge and get reclassified. The sooner the better. If students are reclassified in elementary schools, much better for them, because if not, they're struggling in middle school and high school because it gets harder and harder. And then, students that don't get reclassified in high school do not have as many opportunities as other students in taking more elective classes and things that they like, and even at the risk of not even graduating or being pushed out of the system because they are not getting the classes that they need to graduate. Also, the bilingual CEO is very important, and they did not mention it this time in the report, we have mentioned it in the past, but the bilingual CEO is very important because students that are bilingual and they know about it, they get a special seal on their diploma, which lets them have more opportunities in the workforce and also better opportunities into getting, into colleges and universities. And I just want to let you know that students that took Spanish in seventh and eighth grade, and also students that took the LOT test, the language test, were almost not going to get the seal of bilingual, and my son was not going to get it because he took the LOT last year along with my daughter, and they both passed it. You know, without giving them notice, they took it, they passed it. But because he took it last year, and he's graduating this year, and he's also going to UC Berkeley.
Yeah.
And he's there already, taking six units this summer. Our English learners have a lot of potential, but if parents don't know that they need to ask for it, then their kid might not get the seal, and that's very bad. So, the counselors need to do their job and make sure that kids that took Spanish, seventh and eighth grade, and kids that took the LOT test are included in the students that get the seal of bilingual. Because I'm sure there's many students that should have gotten it that didn't get it because they fell through the cracks. Also, we need more dual language schools like Sherman and Language Academy. It's very important that schools that already have had bilingual like Hamilton and others, that they be pushed to do dual, so that way, other students like African-American students, Vietnamese students, and others also learn Spanish, because we live in a border area that is going to work internationally with Mexico, and that just gives them so much more opportunities. Spanish is one of the largest languages out in the world, so we need our students to do that. We also found out that the long-term English learners, many of them, had special ed or IEPs. So, we need to do more in working with those students that are in special ed and that they don't fall through the cracks in the classes, in the mainstream classes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, Superintendent Martin, do you have a response or comment to the DILAC report?
I'd like to say thank you to the DILAC leadership. Thank you very much. By bringing forward your report tonight and working with our Ola office, we can see that the model that we have created, I actually believe, has infinite possibilities, and you started to show what's possible. And as you talked about, the reclassification rates from 2014-15 to 15-16, going from 3,353 to 3,603, that was one of our areas of commitment, and the year-round schools, as you said, are not even finished yet. When we talked about studying the art of coaching together, that I see you in learning partnership with district staff, with the ELSTs, with the Ola office, and that we're all learners together, and that it's not necessarily more of something, but it's about deeper learning and deeper engagement together as a team. So, we can see that the results are changing. The, we have an increase in the seal of bilingual, and we just see these continued possibilities of what's possible, and I can only see even more possibilities as you continue to work together on the art of coaching. Reclassification, students on track to graduate, but we want to continue. The data is starting to change the narrative, and we changed our model, and now we're starting to see the data catch up with the change in that model. And I appreciate the way that you brought forward tonight's report. I can see that there was a lot of work, your team, with the Ola office, and we want to continue to listen. I think the recommendations that you've brought forward today shows where we've been, and then that we still have work to do. And as we watch very specific metrics begin to change, whether it's our reclassification, whether it's our long-term English learner, whether it's our seals of bilingual, all of these are metrics that are associated with changes in the system, and systemic change takes time, but I can see that it's happening in collaboration with our educators and our community partners. So, thank you for your contributions.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Yes. Vice President Burr.
No, I just want to thank the DILAC Executive Board for your presentation tonight, and congratulations to Ms. Alali for your election as the new head of the DILAC, new chair. And I thought your presentation tonight was excellent and really clear about the way that the DILAC can work with the district to make sure that our students are moving forward. I appreciate the emphasis that you put in your recommendations about the school-level team monitoring the progress of English learners at each school, and also the point about wanting to engage in this understanding of the model that the superintendent proposed a couple of years ago and is moving forward with, which is a capacity-building model. How do we build the capacity of all of our educators to be able to work with English learners? And I think the, as the superintendent just went through, I think the outcomes that we're both tracking, both the DILAC and the district together, it's important that we're on the same page with what we're trying to look at, and I heard a lot of overlap, certainly the numbers of students that are reclassified each year, but of course, what's that rate as well? What's the percentage rate? And then, how many long-term English learners do we have in the district, and is that number coming down? We've talked about that from the outset of the superintendent introducing the model. I think the point that Gabriela made, which is to continue to track the progress of our students after they've been reclassified, is very important, and that links, I think, to the graduation rate, you know, is our English learners on track to graduate even after being reclassified. track to graduate even after being reclassified. And then, the point that Superintendent and Valentina both brought up about the seal of biliteracy, that's a very, very important number for us to be looking at because as Valentina talked about, that's about graduating with the ability to go into the world and participate both bilingually and bicultural. And so, it's great to hear, you know, that our numbers are up. I know when we get our final graduation numbers, we'll be able to, you know, know specifically where that's been. But tracking the seal of biliteracy is, it's also an important value statement that this district has made for many years, which is reclassification sometimes can be seen as the goal is only for students to learn English. And the seal of biliteracy is a commitment that we want students to be proficient in both English and the language that they come to the district with because that's a, you know, pushing students ahead. It's not a, as Dr. Ochoa talks about, it's not a reductive focus. It's a focus that's on being additive. So, again, appreciate the report. And this is, you know, a journey that we've set out to significantly improve outcomes for our English learners based on a capacity-building model. And so, being able to track that together and work on that together is something that we, we're glad that you're our partner. Thank you.
Trustee Visor?
I too want to thank everybody on the DLEC for your work this year and congratulate Laalaya Alali on being the new chair of the DLEC. And I echo all the remarks of Vice President Barrera with the increased number of students that are being reclassified and succeeding under superintendent's initiatives to help support English language learners. I know when that, those proposals first came forward a couple of years ago, there was a lot of doubt because change is difficult. But I believe that the ELD program was based in research and we can see that that is having, it's bearing fruit for a lot of our students. And that's really important to see some more of that data. Not that we stop, but that we want to continue to challenge the supports it providing for the students. The seal of biliteracy, as Vice President Barrera had said, is phenomenally important. And I thought that there was a really good point made that, you know, we have to make sure that we're letting students and parents know of this opportunity and not leave it up to them to come to us and ask for it. And that's really important. And then, one of the things I do want to underscore is the anti-bullying, especially in light of what happened in Orlando when 49 students were murdered, or 49 people were murdered just because they were LGBT. And that level of hate and intolerance is pervasive in our society and in societies around the world where people in other countries are killed just because they're gay. And that's the law of the land. And so, I've said it before and I'll say it again, you know, from every classroom and every pulpit, we must teach our children to love more and not to hate. The initiatives that we've taken in San Diego Unified to provide anti-bullying programs in our schools are not exclusively for any one group of students that are being bullied. And that's a thing that the initial data from the anti-bullying reporting form is proving, that I believe of the initial report of over 130 bullying reports, a majority of them were for other reasons, for race, religion, and there was a large group of students that were reporting being bullied because they were gay or lesbian. And so, to the extent that we will not tolerate Muslim students being bullied in our school district, I'm so thankful of the leadership and initiative of Superintendent Cindy Martin making sure that every single school website and the district website has a link to report bullying, any kind of bullying that will then result in immediate action from the administration and the principal and the school district to put an end to it and let everybody know what is, what is the culture and climate and the expectation in our school district. So, once again, congratulations, Ms. Alali, and I look forward to working together next year.
Thank you. Yes. Trustee Visor?
Thank you for addressing that issue on bullying because the report does show that it doesn't matter what issue it is. There should not be bullying on campus. And we get that report regularly showing us what the data are. So, any kind of bullying is unacceptable and we need to be vigilant about that. Thank you.
Sure. We want all students to arrive at our, in our schools, to feel safe and welcomed and challenged and to be successful. Language learners have that additional difficulty, one of developing proficiency in a, in a new language, which is, which is English. We want to celebrate the language they bring with them. And it's exciting to know that our students can test into, get credit for the language that they bring with them. And so, to go from 240 students tested to 1,075 is quite an accomplishment. I look forward to see what the number looks like next year. But outstanding work for everybody in the department. The work that our students do to develop their English as well as develop their competencies in skill areas is incredible and it's hard work. And in acknowledgement, I have an opportunity, was invited to go to San Marano's reclassification ceremony tomorrow. So, I will be there and want to celebrate with them and their families the work that they've done. Any other comments, questions? So...
I'll move item G2, the school board meeting calendar for January through June 2017.
Second? Okay. Do we have, do we have any speakers on G2? So, if there are any, are there any questions or comments? Moving forward, cast your vote. G2 is approved unanimously. G3?
Second.
2016-17 board membership? Motion for any, any speakers? Any comments? Cast your vote. It passes unanimous. G4?
So, moved.
We have, item G4, the initial proposal from the California School Employees Association Operations Support Services Bargaining Unit Successor Agreement. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you. This is a public hearing to solicit any public comment regarding the initial proposal that's coming forward tonight from CSEA OSS bargaining unit before we start bargaining the successor agreement.
So, the public hearing is open? Any speakers? No speakers? Public hearing is closed? Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Moving forward, G5. The district initial proposal for California School Employees Association's Operations Support Services to bargain successor agreement. Like a motion on G5?
So, moved.
There's a motion?
Sir?
We have a second. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you. This is also a public hearing on our, on the district's initial proposal for CSEA OSS bargaining unit successor agreement. The current collective bargaining agreement that we have with CSEA OSS expires on June 30th, at which time the agreement will be open to negotiations on all subjects. So, the district has received its initial proposal from OSS on May 19th. And consistent with the legal requirements in terms of current agreement, we are sunshining our initial proposals from OSS and our district's initial proposals this evening within, to the union within 40 days of the receipt of the initial proposals. So, that's the process for this evening.
So, the, the item is open for public hearing? Any speakers? No speakers? Closed public hearing? Any questions or comments from the board? If not, cast your vote. Unanimous?
So, we didn't have to vote on G4?
I was confused by it.
Oh. We can vote on them.
Are you offering a motion?
Negative.
All right. So, G6. We'll now hear item G6, the proclamation recognizing, what, do you want to present this?
Sure. Honored to.
Absolutely.
So, item G6 is a proclamation honoring a, whoops, thank you, a legend in our district. Thank you, Trustee Visor. Our own Jane Bausa. So, I'm going to actually just read the proclamation.
Are you moving the item?
Well, you want, how about I read it and then we can move and second it?
Because I'd like to second it.
Absolutely. Okay. So, whereas Jane Bausa was employed with San Diego Unified School District for 36 years as a guidance assistant in various elementary, middle, and high schools, the Polinsky Center and the Placement and Appeals Office, whereas Jane was involved in the school site council and site governance teams, whereas Jane was recognized by the district as the first runner-up for Classified Employee of the Year, received the Partnership Liaison Award, and was awarded special commendation for outstanding support and supervision of more than 300 JROTC cadets at the spring camp for U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton. And whereas Jane was part of a team of employees that worked to establish the right to have union representation, she was part of the team that negotiated the first contract for the California School Employees Association Para Educator Unit Chapter 759. She has served as CSEA Chapter 759 president and vice president. And whereas, as a member of CSEA, Jane contributed in many ways. She served on the Legislative Committee and as the Legislative Liaison to CSEA's Retiree Executive Board, which has allowed her to continue to lobby for education funding in Sacramento. And whereas Jane also volunteers in her community by serving on the Eastern Area Planning Committee and the Oak Park Community Council. And whereas Jane has been recognized for her advocacy by both her community and her fellow district employees, she received a certificate of special congressional recognition for outstanding and invaluable service to the community. She was named the 2004 CSEA Activist of the Year. She received the recognition certificate from the San Diego and Imperial Council, Imperial County's Labor Council for her volunteer hours and awarded the Unsung Hero Award from the Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education commends Jane for her years of dedicated service to the students and employees of the district. Thank you, Jane.
Congratulations. Come on up, Jane.
Oh, should we vote?
Right. So, Jane, you didn't submit a speaker list, but do you have anything to say?
I would like to thank all of you. And it's a privilege to work with San Diego Unified School District for 36 years. And we've been together that long. We have the good times and the bad times. And it's really been a wonderful experience. I may not be working for San Diego Unified School District, but I will continue to support the education and issue for public education. I will be here. I'm not going to disappear. Thank you again.
So, do we have a motion? And we have a second? Cast your votes. We did. Unanimous. Congratulations. Photo up.
Go, Jane!
Oh.
That's a good one.
I've seen another.
Turn around.
Turn around, look this way. Stay in a bit here. Here we go.
Say, raises.
Can anyone move on to that now? All right.
for the board report. I forgot to mention in my board report that we just found out yesterday that the Scripps Ranch High School JROTC Academic Bowl went to Washington, DC and competed against 3,000 other teams from around the United States of America, and they won first place for the whole country. So, you could say we took home the gold medal. But you know what? That's not all we did. University City High School took home second place and their JROTC Academic Bowl brought home the silver medal. It was almost a sweep. Next year gives us something to shoot for. So, I just want to congratulate all of the folks, the students and everybody that has been supporting Colonel Guzman. Superintendent Cindy Martin and this board have been very strong supporters of the JROTC programs in our schools. And I'm just thrilled that we had two teams come in first and second place in the national competition for the JROTC Academic Bowl championship. Thank you.
Thank you for remending your remarks. That's a terrific accomplishment. Moving on to item H, H1. We will now hear item H1, the second reading and adoption of the 2016-19 Local Control Accountability Plan, commonly known as the LCAP, and conduct the public hearing.
I'll move item H1.
Moved, second? It's been seconded. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
Thank you, President McQuarrie. This is the second read of this item. We spent at the previous board meeting, we spent a full day actually, a board workshop presenting our LCAP goals and for tonight for final approval. We actually had been in a feedback process all year long, but specifically officially, there's an official feedback time between the last board meeting and this one. And we had even more input that we continue to get. So, you'll see in the board items, some of the further changes that we made besides the other changes that we've been making all along to, until we got to where the first read was. But we added, we got some feedback from the state and from the county office of education around homeless students to make sure that we were including those subgroups. We added professional development specifically for paraeducators, make sure that we called that out in this most recent revision since the last reading. And we also got feedback from the Crawford Cluster to make sure that we are including students with interrupted formal education and refugee students. So, we specifically added that as an action in goal 1.8.9. We also added requests from our LCAP planning team to make sure that there was a baseline measurement for effective SSCs. That was an addition. And then, in collaboration with the county office, we made sure that we were more specific in our language about how giving examples of increased or improved services, putting that into our narrative, and also how we're duplicating our unduplicated counts as an example of what we're doing to go after equity in some of the requirements in the LCAP. And those are summarized of some of the changes, multiple revisions. And as we bring this forward today, we had the full-day workshop where we spoke about our goals going forward for the year. And to remind everybody that the LCAP is our guiding document. It is the way that we make what we call sacred promises to our students, to our community. We create those promises together and then we come up with metrics that go with those promises and then we keep track. And we have our annual updates and we report back on a monthly basis, which is not a statute or requirement, but we believe that it's important that we look at a monthly, giving updates to one another. So, going forward to summarize, the goal one was closing the achievement gap. We know that to deliver a quality school in every neighborhood, these six areas, these six goal areas are incredibly important. And we focused in our workshop on specifically closing the achievement gap, offering a broad and challenging curriculum, family and community engagement, positive school climate and culture at every school so students feel safe and there's equity at the core of every decision and quality leadership, teaching and learning exists at every campus. So, with that, this is the final, the final read for adoption tonight after we spent a full day and other board meeting on it at the previous board meeting.
We do have a request for public comment. We have five speakers, so three minutes each. Dan Namayanga, Chris Larson, Miriam Ali, William Oswald, Lorraine Burley. And we can start with Dan if he's in the room. May I see him coming? Thank you, Dan. You're up.
that our kids acquire a new language faster. And then, also, I'd like to look at the additional support for the English learners. And in the 1.8, which English learners' support will be organized to provide focused, cluster-based support with the emphasis on different issues. So this, we have been really crying for this, because not every clusters are the same, and different clusters have different demographic for students' needs. And so with this one, I believe it's going to be strong enough for the cluster level to decide and come up with issues, how to solve them, to support their kids better. So I'm looking forward also trying to work together to achieve that. And also, I also like to recognize the efforts that have been made through the Office of Language Acquisition, after parents and the community members raised issues concerning the changing of the new arrival centers within the schools, and also the kind of leadership that, though it was pushed, that have been shown in the 1.8, number nine, where there's a need to form a committee to look into the newly arrived students' issues and come up with a framework to present to the board on the way forward in supporting this special group of students within our communities. So I really like to see that coming and going to a better, and I'm looking forward, as a community, our community and parents are looking forward to sitting down and actually looking at the different issues, how we can support these students. Rather than that, I know there are many issues that there were sent to the LCAP community, and there's no way you can incorporate every, and every, every opinion, but I'm looking forward also to making sure that those who are sent, you can sit down and review again and see what worked, what did not work, and then move forward together to make everything that works within different clusters. Thank you.
So we have, let's see, William Oswald?
Good evening, everyone.
Are you speaking for or against?
Well, I'm speaking to a particular issue on metrics for students with interrupted formal education.
The reason I ask that question is that when we opened the session, it talked about three minutes, four and two opposed? Or is it three each? It's three each? Okay, cool.
Well, I'll be done in three anyway.
Thank you.
Either way. So unless I timed it wrong earlier today. Again, my name is Bill Oswald. I'm with the Global Action Research Center. We're the proud sponsor of City Heights Youth for Change, and I'm here in support of the Parents-Student-Resident Organization and its efforts to improve the quality of services provided to refugee students within the district in general and the Crawford Cluster in particular. To set some context, I think it's important for the board to recognize that California is third in the nation for the number of refugees it settles, and that San Diego resettles half of the adults and more than half of the children, refugee children in the state. And City Heights is home to an estimated 40,000 refugees, and the county receives over 1,000 refugees a month. About 40% of those refugees settle in the City Heights area, making them students of Unified School District. And at this point, what we're saying is this community is now too large to be, have its needs adequately met by adjusting existing services. The district needs to recognize that it is, while language is a problem for refugee students, it is a tip of an iceberg. These students can be pretty much all assumed to be trauma survivors, and so far, what we've seen from the district doesn't quite strike us as trauma-informed practice. Now, I have appreciated how Superintendent Martin in the past has talked about data as a flashlight that can highlight both what works and doesn't work. And so what we're asking for is a flashlight, a flashlight that shines on the students with interrupted formal education, or CIF students. As you heard during the public testimony, there's a lot of concern among parents, students, and teachers about your plan for the new international centers. And I'm here to express a particular concern about the district's plan for these centers. I'm here, particularly, the data seems to, the district has seemed to do this without any data to support or explain why they're making the changes. And the district does not appear to be planning to collect any data that would help them evaluate its efforts on what's working and what's not working. We have repeatedly asked the Office of Language Acquisition for research, for the research they used to develop the model to no avail, leaving us to believe there is no research. We have asked the district to include establishing baseline on CIF in their LCAP, just as they do for other student groups, and as you can see in the document before you, it's not included. Again, leading us to believe the district has absolutely no plans to collect data on these students, and that is to not create a flashlight. We believe it is unconscionable for the district to have made this change without research, and then to move forward and not collect research to see how this affects the students in the international centers. So, we are before you as the board, and I'm speaking as a representative of the Parents- Student-Resident Organization, and calling upon the district to add to the LCAP and to start collecting data, tracking CIF students like they do other students in the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Okay, so speakers opposed, Chris Larson, Miriam Ollie, and Lorraine Burley. Chris Larson?
Yeah, Chris Larson. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Parents-Student-Resident Organization. You've seen me before up here, concerned about the proposed changes to a program that I believe, and many others believe, has been very successful, particularly for students new to this country who have perhaps had limited or interrupted education. My concerns are these. The plan, as I understand it, is that the new arrival teachers will be replaced by teachers with single-subject English credentials. There will be an ELD coach that pushes into the ESL class, as well as a mainstream math class. And I believe the ELD coach will also be teaching a literacy class. My understanding is that this teacher coverage will be less than it is now. So for example, at Crawford, there may only be one ELD coach. It's really difficult to see how this one person can spread themselves so thin, pushing into these other classes. And also, we have not been assured that the coach and the teachers will have planning time, collaborative planning time. Apparently, it's up to the sites. So I just, I can't see this plan as anything but a diminishment of services and support for these students. In terms of the qualifications for these teachers, I think I've said before that I don't believe that single-subject English teachers are best prepared for teaching English learners. I don't think those teachers are inclined to apply for these positions. In fact, I believe that only two people have been appointed for these positions. I don't know what's going to happen when school starts, perhaps substitutes for these newcomers, which is just unbearable to think about. The training for the ELD coaches, we've been told, could be voluntary. What assurance is there that the teachers who are going to be teaching these newcomers have the qualifications and the experience and the expertise that they need? I just, I mean, I've not been, those answers have not been answered to my satisfaction. Perhaps somebody can do that now. And I guess finally, in summary, San Diego has one of the highest numbers of refugee students in the country. I think that our district has the opportunity to be a national beacon for English learners, rather than a shattered lantern that's been thrown against a wall. I believe we can do better. I think we were on the road to that, and I think we can do better. And I think what the district is proposing, which I think might be based on experience at Kearney, it's not good enough. Kearney is not a blueprint for what English learners in this district need, and I please request the district to look very seriously at what they're planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miriam Ollie, followed by Lorraine.
Good evening, Miriam Ollie. And we're talking about the parent engagement, LCAP, what the LCAP is. We suffer, keep asking, the districts of both our children and parents, strong parent engagement. We don't have nothing. We are begging. We beg enough. You just grab what you want. You never include our decision. You never ask the parent, okay, this is what we're planning, this is what we're going to do. Is it good for your children or not? We're just there for you guys to receive the attendance, which is the more money. We understand how the system is working before we didn't know nothing. Please, help our children succeed and get a qualification teacher who qualifies to be teaching English, all the subjects that they need to learn. And we need a parent engagement. We need more training as a parent. We need more workshops. We need a workshop so we can help our children, teach the parent. When we're talking about the parent engagement, we are not talking about the parent who is educated and knows the law, the rules, the system. We're talking about the new arrival parent who never hold a pencil, themselves and the kids. Please, help us. If you cannot help us, let us know so we can go to the next level, which is the federal, state level. We're not going to stay and keep begging you to give what our children need to graduate. We are going to the next level. If you are not taking any action, what we keep begging you and asking you. Help us, help you, help our children. And you need to stop the bullying, because my own children being bullied because they're Muslim. The teacher called my child. Raise your hands if you are Muslim. Is that a professional? Is that respect? Nobody is respecting us. We are suffering. We came from a trauma. We came from a war. We need someone to heal us, ourselves as a parent and the children, okay? You've given us more trauma than we came from. This has to be stopped. This has to be stopped. We're calling the news media. We want them to listen to us, what we go through. How many times we came here, asking you guys, help our children who is a new English language learner. Don't know how to say hi, how are you? Hold a pencil. They never hold a pencil. They just came a war, running from jungle after jungle. If you cannot help us, please send us to the federal or call if you don't have enough money to support us. Maybe you guys have to send an email to the federal and ask we need more money, because we have a high number of newcomers. Who doesn't know nothing? What is parent engagement? What is LCAP? They don't know nothing. We want to educate our parent to become so they can support their children. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Lorraine? Lorraine Burley?
Hi, Kevin.
Thank you.
How are you? Good evening. My name is Lorraine Burley, and my address is on file. I have spent time listening to the discussion on the LCAP Goal Five, Parent and Community Engagement, with great interest, and I've listened and participated in several of the workshops. The statements in the LCAP about meaningful engagement, about building community relations and partnerships, do not echo what actually occurred in the Scripps Ranch community. Initially, I didn't support the LCAP plan, but after several hours of reading the online docs today, I do support approval of this plan. I appreciated the accountability highlighted as a high concern, and that you plan to create a new position for an Executive Director of Family and Community Engagement. This should hopefully help with future feedback. But what about now and today? Fifteen years ago, the school board approved a joint use agreement for a farmer's market at a Scripps Ranch school parking lot for the benefit of the school and the community. In that agreement, a requirement in the ed code was emphasized, to ensure that any use of school property under a joint use agreement does not unduly disrupt the residents in the surrounding neighborhood. The joint occupancy four-story apartment proposal with the Monarch Development Group proposed at this Scripps Ranch parking lot disrupts the surrounding neighborhoods, and it disrupts the surrounding community. The apartment proposal has significant negative impacts. The recent notice to the farmer's market to vacate the property after 15 years by June 2017 is a great loss to the community. The bulk and height of the apartment proposal is out of character of the neighborhood. This proposal requires the board to circumvent the school safe zone laws. You are increasing the likelihood of exposure to guns, alcohol, drugs, sex offenders within 1,000 yards of students by supporting the apartment proposal. Under city review, the project is one complete, not separated, project site. You know you need to separate this site with a ground lease. This proposal will most certainly impact any future relationship and partnership with the Scripps Ranch community. Our children and neighborhoods deserve a safe and quality real estate development plan, a real estate development plan that creates a positive relationship with the surrounding neighborhoods and community. I do support the LCAP plan. I am encouraged by improving accountability and the hiring of a new director, and our kids and neighborhoods should always be first.
Thank you. So that concludes the public hearing. Close. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Yeah. Vice President Burr.
Thank you, President McCrory. I'd just like to, we've, you know, had, as Superintendent said, several discussions about the LCAP as a whole. The item that folks have raised tonight about working with refugee students and how we monitor the outcome metrics that we establish, the data that we use to track, and just the general strategy of working with students in this category, I wonder if Superintendent, you could comment on that?
We specifically added that, the action in the students with interrupted formal education and refugee students, and when we have actions, we do have to have metrics to go with those actions. So that, I know that's being discussed by the team now. We heard that feedback, and we need to identify what the right metrics would be for that.
And it sounds like it's developing those metrics, it might be something that we want to work with people from the community.
Well, and let's also remember that the state is still deciding what the state metrics will be, and that will be in September. When we looked at our first year of LCAP, some of the metrics that we put in don't make sense anymore. Some, we want to make sure we're aligned to what the federal government has, their metrics, and then the state will adopt those in September. And we will need to see here locally what are the important metrics to look at.
Right, and we have active community partners that want to work with us.
That have some ideas, sure.
Yes. Justice Waidhur Spain?
On the complaints about the issues related to children being discriminated against, we've asked the office to look into that, and I believe Superintendent did have staff to look into those complaints.
Yes.
So we are aware of them, and we've looked into them. We've met several times with the community about their concerns. Yes, we're following up on things.
Yeah, I just want to repeat what I said last time, that I do think that there was a much more open process this year than last year, just as evidenced by some of the cluster meetings I attended, where they went over in great detail different elements of the LCAP. And with the discussion tonight about English language learners, English language support teachers, we have seen that there is an increase in the number of kids who are being reclassified. There's some other statistics that we would certainly want to look at also, but that's something that's being very closely monitored and measured. Another goal had to do with the A to G requirements, and obviously, we've seen the results of that in terms of the recent reports on the graduation rates. So in all of our--
we've asked the office to look into that, and I believe Superintendent did have staff to look into those complaints.
Yes.
So, we are aware of them, and we've looked into them. We've met several times with the community about their concerns. Yes, we're following up on things.
Yeah, I just wanna repeat what I said last time, that I do think that there was a much more open process this year than last year, just as evidenced by some of the cluster meetings I attended, where they went over in great detail different elements of the LCAP. And with the discussion tonight about English language learners, English language support teachers, we have seen that there is an increase in the number of kids who are being reclassified. There's some other statistics that we would certainly want to look at also, but that's something that's being very closely monitored and measured. Another goal had to do with the A to G requirements, and obviously, we've seen the results of that in terms of the recent reports on the graduation rates. So, in all of our goals through LCAP and through Vision 2020, we have some, we have some very concrete advances. We also have some very ambitious goals. I mean, one of our goals several years ago was to say we would have our students graduating able to communicate in two languages. And we have some students who already speak a language, they meet that requirement. We have high school students now all taking a world language, so that's progress, but there's still a lot further to go in terms of starting at the elementary level and the middle school levels, that students really do become fluent in another language in our global economy. We have another goal of having our workforce, and particularly our teaching staff and other employees, more closely match the diversity of our students. That's a very ambitious goal. We've got a long ways to go on that, but we've taken some steps in terms of putting a flashlight on it and, you know, the teacher pipeline process and so forth. And I just have to comment as a former teacher of English as a second language, former teacher of Spanish, that we really need to have higher expectations for our English language learners. There are a lot of challenges that they face, many needs, both socio-emotionally and academically and so forth, but we really cannot sell them short. And when I hear comments about it takes years and years and years for someone to be proficient in English or any other language, that's simply not true. It can be done in a much shorter period of time, which is why we're actually working on increasing the rate at which students are reclassified. And one of the statistics we've seen, I believe, is that the students who are reclassified have actually outperformed the general population of students once they reach that level, because they have really an added process there. So, I'm very sympathetic to the challenge that they're faced, but I think we really have to look at a much higher expectation of them. In the same way, we heard with imposing the A to G requirements, we heard this is gonna be a disaster, there are gonna be more high school dropouts, the graduation rate's gonna go down, our students are not capable of this, and yet, we saw the exact opposite happen. And it's not, obviously, just having high expectations, it's providing the supports that are necessary. And we, and just as we've seen with the overall English language population, we do want to see in the next year and the year after, what is happening with our new arrivals, and are they actually doing better in, particularly in high school, or are they not, and making whatever adjustments are necessary at that point. But that's one detail there. I also make another comment, which is, I don't like hearing in a public comment the implication, as someone who has lived in an apartment, that people who live in apartments bring problems of drugs and guns and sexual abuse to the community. That's all.
I'm gonna, the point you made before, that last one about our students and making sure that we have high expectations for them and give the appropriate support, and when you talked about the accountability and the metrics that go with it, I'll caution that we have our metrics. Our metrics are A to G, our metrics are reclassification, our metrics are seal of illiteracy, our metrics are the rate for long-term English learners, and those metrics are really important, and we believe in those. And so, when you can parse down data into little individual pieces, but the end goal is the end goal. And so, do we have metrics along the way that get us towards that end goal? And I'll just caution us around parsing down pieces of information to such a small amount that we're actually losing sight of the big picture. And so, to have high enough expectation and have landmarks or roadmaps along the way, when there's a, you use a flashlight and you point that flashlight, that markers along the way towards that end goal, the end goal, we aren't going to change that, we're not going to diminish the goal, we're not gonna diminish the expectation, and we understand our refugees, our refugee students and our students with interrupted formal education, we might need to check in with different flashpoints along the way, but the end goal is the end goal.
For all students.
For all students. And to have a separate set of metrics, to have a separate flashlight to look at a special group of students, we could forget the end goal. So, it's a matter of a delicate balancing act about how do we look at that, and there are different data points that matter, different metrics that matter for different subgroups at different points in their career, but we're really clear on what the end goal needs to be.
One question related to the states and the state and the Fed. It's my understanding that they initiated a request for change in the program.
There was, I was gonna mention that too, because one of the reasons for the change was there was a credentialing issue, as I understood it, that didn't allow you to continue with the current model. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, we are going towards a model that's looking at multiple measures. We're looking at the state, federal requirements for the education secondary.
But I'm talking about the credentialing issue of the teachers.
Oh, I thought those are two different subjects.
Was that what you were talking about?
The newcomer teacher.
That's what you were referring to, was the credentials of teachers.
That was something that we looked at as well, yes.
But wasn't, didn't you need to do that because the state was not accepting?
That was one of the factors.
Okay.
But it wasn't the only factor, it wasn't the only reason why we made a change.
Sure.
Which I think was different than your question, Dr. Whitehouse Payne, about the change in the accountability system at the state and federal level, or was that specifically around English? Oh, okay, okay.
And the only point I was making was, that I realize that's not the only issue, but that you couldn't continue with the current system, the state didn't allow you to have the credential teachers participating in those classes, so something, something had to change.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to echo what Trustee Evans had mentioned about this year's LCAP process as compared to the past years, where the process was much more open and transparent and much more involved. And I really appreciate Superintendent Cindy Martin's efforts this year to try to do a better job of reaching out into all of the clusters, especially to amend and improve the document, because it's a living document, we need to adjust and adapt. I also wanna thank a lot of the speakers that spoke tonight, because a lot of the comments that you make really help us to do a better job as trustees and as a district. So, I'd like to thank you for speaking, especially the parents, to talk about parent training and parent engagement, and making sure that it's meaningful and that it's not just procedural from the district's point of view, so that we get better outcomes that way. And I think that, you know, Vice President Barrera has been a champion of, you know, parent involvement in our schools, and the culmination of that is improved and more robust programs, as well as the director position that's gonna help us to try to improve that going forward. So, I really am excited about this year's LCAP approval process. The last thing I did wanna mention was that in the LCAP, it underscores the value that this district places academically and financially for music education. And so, then I hope and know that as we go forward with more instrumental music programs in elementary, making sure that we're preserving and expanding instrumental music in the middle and high school programs, that that's underscored, because that's in our LCAP document. And that's what we need to, that's what we're continuing to do. And I know that in the next action item, H3, our budget, that that will help support and speak to some of the things that are clearly articulated in the LCAP, especially music in our schools. Thank you.
Absolutely, ditto.
I would like to also comment regarding the importance of raising expectations, as well as providing additional support. And as we do that, I think we learned on this last go-around, that it's not only expectations and support, but it's making greater access. And as we looked at students, where they were in their pathway to graduate, we found out that there were barriers that were preventing students from taking the classes necessary to graduate, and so we made an effort to remove those barriers, build those bridges, create the opportunities and raise the expectations, and gave the support for students to believe that they could take an AP class, an IB class, a college prep class, to take an honors class. And as they did that, they were able to act on their confidence and to develop those, fulfill those A to G requirements. So, making access greater, I think, has been a major, major outcome as well. My first introduction to the district as a board member was in the 2014-15 go-around, when we first created the first LCAP. Now, we're into, we did a second go-around, and now we're into the third one. And what a major improvement it has become. And I can, I remember Trustee Barrera talking about the importance of having a document that is a true guide, that could be understood, that was user-friendly, that was not long and cumbersome. And so, we're still, I think, working on that, and statewide, we're working on creating a document that'll be more, more useful, and more friendly, and more helpful. I expect that the third and the fourth and fifth year will be even, even better. Nice work on the part of the staff, our clusters, and the input that we've had in order to create this. I know not everybody got everything they wanted, but we were able to put in, people were able to have their voices heard, and hopefully, those who didn't get what they wanted to have understood the reasons why, and continue to advocate then for programs and services that you feel are essential, because that's how we grow and learn as an educational system. So, the LCAP is important, it has credibility, it should have credibility, it should have integrity, and we're acting on it tonight to approve it. Is there any other comments? Cast your vote.
That was a cliffhanger.
I'll move item H3, the budget.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
H2, not H3.
H2.
H2, not H3. I'm hearing that my microphone.
I'll amend my motion to move H2.
It's on.
Yeah, H2 is the second reading and adoption of the proposed 2016-17 district budget, and conduct a public hearing.
Thank you, Dr. McCrory. This is completely tied to the item that we just read. The LCAP is our plan, and the budget is how we pay for our plan. And so, they are inextricably linked, and they, and when we make our promises with the metrics that go with it, we then fund these priorities that are in alignment with Vision 2020 in order to create a quality school in every neighborhood. So, we had the first read of the budget at our previous meeting, tonight is the second read for adoption, and some of the things that we've talked about in terms of enhancements, continuing the investment in class size, continuing some of the major investments that we've already made. The model is, the model hasn't changed in terms of making investments in programs that we believe have promise. When those programs work and we build capacity around it, then we want to replicate and take to scale across the district. So, under closing the achievement gap, for example, one of the programs that we saw initial success in is the one-to-one devices, and we wanna expand that, we're adding more devices as we're going to 13,000 more students will be able to take home their computers as an example of closing the achievement gap. The example that we have, continuing going forward, further investment when you offer a broad and challenging curriculum, our investment in the arts, music, music programs are very important in terms of a broad and challenging curriculum. Quality teaching, leadership, and learning is very connected to our full-scale model about building capacity, that all of our educators have access to being able to learn and to improve in a growth and development model. We're also investing in the whole child, an expansion of our restorative practices, our wellness centers, the reconnection efforts that we're going to be doing to make sure students, that for whatever reason, that is something that we can control, to find ways for them to reconnect to their education. And what we do is we invest, we monitor, we use metrics, we replicate, and we take to scale what we know is working, and we decide what's working based on the metrics and based on the agreements that we've made with one another. So, this budget reflects our priorities and continuing going forward in the next year. And we have our CFO here, if you have further questions, but we did a full presentation at the previous board meeting, and this is a second read for final adoption this evening.
Okay, so we're now gonna open it for public hearing. Do we have any speakers? No speakers, public hearing is.
Thank you, Chair. Sharon Etta, comment.
Oh, no, this is just the public hearing portion. You're next. Closed. Now, we have a comment for the board discussion.
None, you have no public. I just wanted to really say that, for me, this evening, having the students hear from Clark, and seeing, seeing the diversity of the group, and recognizing that all students can perform and will perform. When we expect them, we provide them with the instruments and what they need to achieve, it can be done. So, to those naysayers who don't think that it can be done, kids don't like this, they're not gonna want to participate, I say that we provide the access, and we do what's necessary to provide the infrastructure. I've spoken to Russ Spurley, and also to some of the principals about them assisting him in ensuring that when these teachers come on board to work with the children, that they understand how to work with them, and contacted the principal at Freeze, because Russ had asked me to do that, to contact some of the principals. And they've taken on that leadership role to ensure that when the music teachers are there to work with the children, that they will not be sitting in the principals' offices, but they will be engaged in the music activities on campus and whatever else is offered. At Zalmarano, as the president pointed out last week, they had 1,200 students there, each submitted a document of drawing or some art activity displayed, and the parents came out to see, and they were all enthusiastic and excited. So, when we set the standards high and expect children to learn, they will do so when we support them, and that's my passionate belief, and I stand on that principle, that children rise to where we expect them to be, and not just dumb it down all the time, they can't do it, they're not interested. Not so when we put the standard out there and support them and help them. It's my impassioned belief.
Other comments?
I just have to say that it's a testament to the process that we've gone through in linking the LCAP to the budget and, you know, the community process that we've gone through, which is really an ongoing process. We know that tomorrow, we're gonna start the process again for next year's LCAP and next year's budget. But the fact that we're sitting here to adopt the final budget with no public comment is a little surreal. But we know the community is participating in that.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to say something similar, I mean, express appreciation to the staff. The board has outlined certain priorities, and those priorities are based on what we've, what we've heard from the community. And the staff has worked really hard, I mean, the superintendent, chief of staff, the CFO, all of the people involved, to really, to really stretch the budget, to find every possible dollar, to make down payments on things that we don't necessarily have a lot of money for, but really being, being very creative and trying to make sure every single dollar is well-spent. And I'm saying that because it's really, it's really been an integrated process in terms of the instructional team and the financial team and everything else, because what we saw in years past is one group pit against another, the, you know, instructional people that want one thing, financial people who give another answer, and to have everybody really working together and trying to solve it is really, really a great job. We really appreciate it.
So, just a reminder, this is a three-year budget. We're looking at 2016-17, looking down the road here for, it's a three-year school plan with three-year projection, the LCAP. And as I look at one of the, one of the indicators in terms of what generates revenue for this district, it has to do with ADA, and it's the revenue that we get with the number of students. And it was mentioned several times tonight that we're all about the money, but, and we're not, but the money does allow us to attack and to address the issues that provide a quality education. We're looking at 3,000, a reduction of 3,000 students over the next three years, and if there's a major assumption or intervention that we can take a look at, it's how do we, how do we diminish that decline, how do we grow our schools, and how do we, how do we increase the revenue as a result?
Or advertising, or just schools.
So, it is a challenge. Any other discussion, comment? Then, if not, cast your vote. So, that is approved, and is chariot.
I'll move item H3, the Title I budget.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
This is also connected to our goals, although it's a This is also connected to our goals. Although it's a separate Title I budget, it's deeply connected to our LCAP goals, and specifically some of the enhancements and the efforts that we'll be doing next year to increase parent and family, community engagement with the executive director of parent and family and community engagement is included in this plan, among other things. And looking at how we'll make sure that we have district-wide systemic approach to interventions is also an area of need and focus in this budget.
Comments on the Title I? If not, cast your vote.
I have a comment on that.
Okay. It is unanimous. H4.
I'll move item H4, the resolution authorizing the issuance of trans notes.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Superintendent Martin?
Thank you, President McQuarrie. This is a resolution to authorize the 2016-17 tax and revenue anticipation notes, otherwise known as the trans in an amount not to exceed $250 million, and it's to authorize the execution and the delivery of the related documents that are included in the note purchase agreement and the POS, the official statement, and the continuing disclosure certificate, as we have the exhibit to the preliminary official statement is included in Appendix D.
Okay. Do we have any speakers? No? Any comments from the board? Do we have a motion? We did have a motion. Cast your vote. Passed unanimously. H5?
I will move H5.
H5 has been moved.
I'll second H5, because it will result in an ongoing savings of over $21,000 a year.
All right. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
I'll say thank you to the financial team who is here for the trans item. And now they all leave. Thank you. H5 is a ratification of the negotiated agreements that we had specifically with the Administrators Association, is to ratify those agreements and to put into place the specific actions that were described in the item. Has to do with the change in the Child Development Center administration, that's looking at some of our child development centers that were smaller versus larger ones, and to get the pay into alignment and a payroll supervisor, as well as a program manager in nursing and wellness.
Do we have public speakers? Comments? Board? All right, pass your vote. Passed unanimously. We have two items, I believe they were item I9 and I33, so...
I'll move item 9, I9 and I33.
Let's see, take them, okay. Do them separately? So actually, citizen is signed for, we only have, we have citizen signed for I9 and I33, citizen. And we have a motion and a second.
Regarding I9, caps and gowns, there was a time when the people didn't know that there was a court case that said that graduation is an educational activity. So you can't charge for caps and gowns. I'm very glad to see that there is a contract to be providing these caps and gowns for all of the seniors that are graduating San Diego Unified. I also want to bring up an issue that parents are bringing up to me, charging for tickets. Now, I can't quite understand how that's illegal, but it's certainly not moral. What is happening is that the students that get their hands on these tickets for graduation are scalping them, and they're selling them for 40, 50, $75. So something needs to be done so that people are not taking advantage of other people. I believe that the graduation ceremony should be open to the public. Our taxpayers have paid for that land, they paid for the schools, they paid for the whole activity. And I think that any taxpayer that wants to attend should not be charged to attend a graduation ceremony. That's a public event, and kids shouldn't have to be scrambling, trying to get tickets for their families. So something needs to be done about providing a forum that's free and available to all. And you want me to speak to the other one?
Yes.
Regarding this contract for more legal advice from law firms, I see a lot of these. I do not see any accountability for the general counsel and the legal office as to how much this school district is spending on legal issues. This needs to be brought up to the board, how many people are working in this office. When they all got raises, the general counsel received a $21,000 raise, they all said, "We want raises, but we promise you that because you're giving us more money, we're not going to outsource our legal services, we're going to do it in-house, because we're really good. Give us more money, and we're going to do it in-house." And that has not been the case. Taxpayers are paying for outside legal firms over and over again. I don't think there's an agenda that I've seen yet in which the legal office isn't getting another law firm and more money for outside legal advice. Why did they get those raises? It makes no sense. The board said that was going to be the policy, this work was going to be done in-house. And if you don't have the attorneys that can handle these legal matters, they need to fire them, they need to find attorneys that can handle these matters.
Any other comments from the board, questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. It is unanimous. Do we have any public speakers?
She knows that you already approved these, but she didn't want to speak.
Okay. So Valentina Hernandez, one at a time.
Well, I had marked a couple there for section I, and she had said that it was already approved, but then it wasn't, because even Sally got to speak and I didn't. So yeah, I wanted to talk about some of the different points on here. One of them was the YMCA after-school program. I wanted to know a little bit more about that. I think it is a good idea to have students, local students, participate in the after-school program at the YMCA, but I don't know how much money it consists of, or how you're really going to monitor it and make sure that students in the local schools have access to the new YMCA, especially here next to Hoover, because I don't know if that's really true. So that would be good if they were getting the free services. And...
You said I20 here.
Also, the social work program at Hoover, that was number 20, paid by Price Charities. I think that's a good program that helps students that need the help and the parents, and that should continue. And I also think that the parents, the Price Charities should bring back the parent centers, so that way all parents feel welcome, not only the ones of the kids that are going to go to college, because now they want to give the money only to College Avenue Compact, and that means the kids that are going to go to college. But how about the kids that are not going to college, or the parents that don't know if their kids are going to college or not? So we definitely need parent centers at all schools, and parents need to feel welcome at all schools, and not be blocked by principals that don't like you, like myself. They block me. And computers for kids, Computer 2 San Diego program, I think that's a great idea, to provide access to students and their families to computers, because not all families have them. And they need the parent training to use the internet, to get an email, to learn how to use Power Schools. All of that, parents need to be informed and educated on a daily and weekly basis in the schools. It's not good just to do a one-time workshop on Power School, no. Parents need to be taught that they could do it with their phone and get constant updates on the spot. You can see right away, your kid, hey, they're getting As, they're being Bs, or they're being absent, or they're missing classes. Right away, you find out, you call, you say something's going on, you get on your kid, you make sure they go to school, because the best thing is you want them to get an education. And the other one from California Endowment for the Restorative Justice, okay, I think that's great that they're providing money. I don't know how much money they're funding, but I would like to know. And I want to know also that those kids are not just giving off, you know, like, continue doing bad things, and then just get off the, you know, get off with it, because they're being more open to you doing bad things. No. Every kid needs to know that they need to be in their best behavior, and that it's not appropriate to bully, it's not appropriate to stab a kid in the back in a classroom, that happened in a kindergarten, first grade class, and to cut another kid's hair. And then they blame the teacher, and they want to blame the teacher, the substitute, myself, to not go back to that school. There is a problem. And just because we document everything that's going on in the classroom, the time and everything, then some principals don't like that.
Thank you.
Because they want to go to restorative justice only. No. There just needs to be a stop to some of the bad things that are going on. Thank you.
What you just did was to talk to agenda items, item I, and if you wanted...
But that's the agenda, they can't comment now, right?
Right, yeah, so, right, what way you would do that in the future would be to submit your, the item prior to the start of the meeting.
I did. I did. But she said that it had already been the agenda, and they had to approve.
Right, you have to do it at the start of the meeting at 5:00. Okay. But that's where it would go.
Right now, please.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the meeting.
Thank you.
Good job, Mike.
We did it.
You?
Sir.
Good job, sir.
Very well.